I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. And just to start, I have just a couple of announcements. Number one, just to remind all the board members to make sure you turn on your mic and speak into the microphone. It is a live streaming meeting. Number two, there will be, as we did at the last meeting, a 30-minute reception following the board meeting. And the main purpose of that is for anybody from faculty or staff or anybody that wants to engage with board members, there's your opportunity. We don't want to be a board that's isolated or not easily approachable, and so we're trying to provide that opportunity at each meeting. Also, after that 30-minute reception, board members need to come back in here because there will be a very important informational meeting on the upcoming SAC COC review. So it's a bit of a long day, so we'll try to move ahead. So anyway, first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. The minutes have been, I'm sorry, we have to call the roll. Okay?
Fleming. Please use your mics. Geist?
Here.
Harper? Oakley?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Segurty?
Yeah.
Mr. Segurty, I need you to answer a series of questions since you are participating electronically. First, can you simultaneously hear and speak to the board members?
I can.
Please identify any person present in the location from which you are calling.
There's no one else here.
And please confirm that you've received the board materials in advance of the meeting.
I have, thank you.
Stikes?
Here.
Van Hooser?
Here.
Willmore?
Present.
And Jones?
Here.
You have a quorum physically present, Chairman.
Thank you. Also, well, I guess just to get started, Agenda Item Number Two, Approval of the Minutes. The minutes have been published. And so Mr. Oakley has made a motion to approve the minutes. Johnny Stikes has seconded. Any corrections to the minutes? All in favor of approving the minutes? We have a roll call vote. Go ahead.
Fleming?
Aye.
Geist?
Aye.
Oakley?
Aye.
Stike, uh, Segurty?
Aye.
Stikes?
Aye.
Van Hooser?
Aye.
Willmore?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye. I'm sorry, Mr. Oakley, we have to do the roll call because Perna's not here. So they make us do that. Okay, so moving along, Agenda Item Number Three, the President's Report. Dr. Oldham, are you ready?
I am, thank you. Most of the report will be, I'll defer to Dr. Leslie Krickenberger to give us an update on the salary increases and how that performed. If you recall back to the last board meeting, there was some discussion about the salary increases and how those funds would be distributed. And she's prepared to give that report on behalf of the university. As she's getting up and getting ready, I'll real quickly talk about where we are. Of course, the fall semester will take place. Classes will start on the 28th. We're looking forward to a large incoming freshman class, as was reported in the committee meeting this morning. Looks like this will be a significantly larger freshman class than last year, than the last two years, actually. And so enrollment looks to be in pretty good shape. We also are looking forward to a major event here on campus Monday with the solar eclipse. That's a once-in-a-500-year kind of event here in Cookeville, I guess, so I hope that some of you will be able to witness that with us, anyway. But with that, I'll turn it over to Leslie, and she can walk you through the report on how those salary dollars have been distributed.
Thank you, President Oldham. All right, so I wanted to give a little bit of background because there's some discussion about our performance evaluations. So first, I'm gonna talk about non-faculty performance evaluation process. Our non-faculty evaluation process includes our executives, so that would be our vice presidents, deans, associate vice presidents, our administrative group, and our clerical support groups. That's our exempt group and our non-exempt group. Our exempt employees had seven core competencies and 12 for our non-exempt staff evaluations prior to 2016. It was not tied to their job duties or performance, so we didn't really have a lot of value in our evaluation system. So everybody was really rated fairly high. As you can see here, 44% of our faculty, or I'm sorry, our non-faculty staff were scored out of 44%, which is an A+. And 88% of our staff actually were A-, or better. So we were saying everybody did an exceptional job. So we came up with a new evaluation system. We actually had a committee put together, and in 2015, this committee really said, you know, we really need a better evaluation system. One that focuses on job performance, one that our employees can have a voice in through a self-evaluation component, and one that allows for specific goals and achievements. And so we came up with four very specific goals that we needed. We wanted to establish a set of core competencies that were relevant to all positions. And you can see here, I think, Mr. Stikes, you were really focused on innovation, and that happens to be one of our core competencies. So these are the six that came out as part of our flight plan. We wanted to ensure that they tied directly back to the individual's job responsibilities and that the employee was rated on those responsibilities. So it's directly tied to their job description. We also shortened our evaluation ranking system. We had an 11-point scale prior to this new evaluation system, and so we changed that down to a four-point ranking scale. And of course, the big component of our new evaluation system is we really wanted to be able to tie future merit increases to our evaluation system. And really, this allows the employee and the supervisor to set those goals and establish direction for innovation and successful department achievements throughout the prior year. So in our first year of conducting the new evaluation system, we saw some decreases in our rating system, if you will. We had 41% were greater than a 3.5, which means they exceeded expectations. How only, however, only 13% of those were a perfect score versus the 44% in the last model. You can see that 79% of our non-faculty staff meet or met or exceeded expectations in 2016. For the current year, we actually are continuing to do improvements on that, and you see that only 7% got a perfect score of a 4.0, which suggests that those individuals were exceeding expectation, and that 33% of those employees were 3.5 or better. So we continue to move the mark towards actually rating our employees accurately. And here's an example of our progression towards a standard bell curve. If you can see, the red line from 2013 was the old evaluation system. The gold line is 2016, and the purple line is this current year. So how does that tie back to merit? We really used our evaluation scores to tie that back directly to merit, and that ability goes directly to the supervisor to establish those merit rankings. Once the supervisor reviews and assigns their dollar amount, it goes to HR to approve that to make sure there are not inherently any discrimination or that a score is not disproportionate to the actual merit increase. So what were the components for non-faculty for the, this current year? Well, of course, we had the 1% cost-of-living adjustment. Those were budgeted for all employees hired prior to January 1st. The 2% merit pool was also budgeted for all employees hired prior to January 1st. However, that did not include those that were on a performance improvement plan within the last fiscal year. And we also conducted within our non-faculty a small equity study that included both non-exempt and exempt positions. This is an example of how we assign merit to our, for our supervisors. Each department at the high level, typically the vice president level or the AVP level, will get a merit spreadsheet such as this one. And this is how they would assign their dollar amount. The column that is yellow on the right-hand side was the column that they could manipulate for the merit increase. And you can see for this past year, or this current year, our non-faculty spread for merit increases was 0% to 7.53%. So if you included the cost of living, it was a 1% to 8.53%. So let's talk about our faculty compensation plan and our faculty process.
Just one quick question. Could you, you said there were 1,200 employees. How many are faculty? How many are non-faculty?
We have approximately 300 that are faculty, and the remainder is non-faculty.
Thanks.
I'm trying to delegate that.
Microphone.
Staff who are...
Staff who are exempt versus non-exempt, so the executive, administrative from the staff.
Yes, I actually brought those numbers. I did not bring those numbers, I'm sorry. I would say we probably, and this is an estimate of what I remember, it is 305 employees are non-exempt, 342 are administrative, so they're exempt, and 34 are executive who are also exempt. Okay? All right, so shifting to the faculty compensation plan, it is separate from the staff compensation plan.
Sorry, Leslie. At some point, can we get that broken down even further, the non-faculty? The same data, but broken down from staff to the executive? It would be interesting to see in terms of raises and such, because we're kind of lumping all of those, all of those salaries into one pool, and there's a huge difference between an admin associate versus VP. And so when we're looking at this distribution and the averages, could it be skewed?
I have that, actually.
Okay, yeah, just, I mean, not, I just wonder if we could have that at some point.
The average for executive group was, the lowest raise was a 1%. The medium raise or the average was 3.1, and the highest raise was 4.1. For the administrative group, it was 1% was the lowest, 3% was average, 8.5 was the highest. And for the non-exempt, it was 1.0 was the lowest, 3.0 was the average, and 5.4% was So let's move on to faculty compensation. Again, it is separate from our staff compensation. There is a faculty compensation committee that is made up of several faculty members, and this is handled through Academic Affairs. It's not a function of Human Resources, but I do work closely with Academic Affairs. Their plan includes a market equity component and a small merit component based on the previous five-year evaluations. Their process includes that all tenured and non-tenured faculty are evaluated annually by their chairperson and the dean. However, prior to that annual evaluation, they are required to file a faculty annual report, which documents their activities and efforts. And here's an example of the faculty evaluation form. And you can see in 2013, if we look at the same data, they scored 86% as high or outstanding. They are on a five-point rating scale. And for the current year, they are also shifting towards a more normalized bell curve with 77% of their scores showing high or outstanding. So their raise components for this current year were the same. It was the 1% cost-of-living adjustment for all budgeted faculty and a 2% market equity component. This market equity component includes bringing all faculty up to the 80th percentile for their national COOPA data based on their discipline and rank. And there's additional equity applied to that based on a formula that moves faculty towards their target salary. That equity also assesses their merit for the previous five-year evaluation. So based on their evaluation, that could adjust their equity that they receive.
What part of that was actually on merit? A percentage of that total 3% was based on merit?
They use a formula that includes market equity and their merit, so this 2% would be a combination of that.
What was the part associated with merit?
Mark Stevens? Do you? I'll ask Mark.
The model that we use doesn't separate those out specifically into a market adjustment versus a merit. But what the merit component does is based on your evaluation scores within your department, your target salary is adjusted either up or down by, in this case, $2,000 times your ranking within the department.
So if I understand it correctly, you're saying that 1% is given just because they lived another year. Another 2%, some of which we don't understand, was given simply because people in other universities make more than them, so they were given that. So we're talking about some smaller percentage was actually based on merit, which my understanding was not what this board instructions was back at the last meeting. Did I misunderstand the last meeting?
I don't think that's correct. I mean, we basically approved a 1% across the board.
Right.
And then the 2%, the additional 2% was gonna be based on merit and/or, well, I mean, we can go back and look at the motion, but it...
Don't hold up the time. I'll go look it up and get back with you.
You've gotta have some sort of basis for doing it.
Yeah, the basis, what I thought we laid out was based on merit. I don't remember there being a dichotomy of the merit. Well, the merit is factored into both of those other aspects, so that merit influences the target that is started out from COOPA. COOPA is where we start, and then we adjust that for these other factors, but merit is factored into all those.
Maybe seeing actual numbers might help, seeing how that actually plays out with some numbers.
All right, so when we look at the faculty raises across the scorings for the performance evaluations, you have a spread from 1% to 15.2%. This does include faculty promotions. And then they also have an additional merit bonus. So this was additional permanent funding pool of $150,000, and this is a one-time merit bonus based on their current evaluation. And so 47% of faculty received the merit bonus, and that ranged from $526 to $2,402. Any questions?
So the permanent funding pool, that will be ongoing into the future, but they only get the bonus for that one year?
It's based on, it's a one-year bonus based on their current evaluation, correct?
So those are two separate things, right?
That is...
Yeah, those are two separate things. So there's this permanent funding pool, and then there was a one-time merit, and those are separate.
Correct.
I think that's what you were asking.
Correct. So you have a permanent merit bonus pool that is totally separate from the 3% pool.
Any other questions for Leslie? Thanks, Leslie. I think, my takeaway from this is that particularly on the staff side, you can see that we're doing a pretty good job at correlating performance with pay distributions. And that's, I think we're making pretty significant progress there. Actually, I think it's encouraging to me that we're also seem to be making some progress on the faculty side at distributing dollars accordingly. I thought I went over this at the last board meeting, maybe I didn't. And that is, the current faculty compensation model was developed here at Tennessee Tech roughly 30 years ago with a lot of faculty input and has continued to receive a lot of faculty support for that over the years, although some of the institutional history around the formula has been lost and some communication probably needs to be improved in that regard, and we're working on that. But it was, I think I'm correct, saying it was initially designed primarily to raise the floor for faculty to a level of national competitiveness in terms of salaries. Okay? It never really was, although there's a merit component in it, merit was not the emphasis at the time because that wasn't the major issue. I met with the faculty compensation committee earlier this week, and we had a very good, robust conversation around some of these issues related to the faculty compensation model. And I'm pretty convinced that we're gonna be able to work together pretty closely to continue to refine this as we move forward.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out on page eight of 15, the minutes, that third paragraph on the bottom, I expressed the notion that I was not for across-the-living increase. But Mr. Segurty stated he agreed with giving a small across-the-board increase to the employees that received a satisfactory rating and to use the remainder for merit pay to encourage Tennessee Tech employees to do better. At the request of the chair, Ms. Carpenter took a roll call vote, and the motion carried 6 to 3 with Dr. Fleming, Dr. Geist, and Mr. Stikes casting the nay votes. So it was clearly in my mind, maybe I'm missing something, but it was voted that a cross-the-board vote would be given, a cross-the-board merit increase, a cross-the-board increase would be given, and that the merit pay would be used to encourage the employees to do better.
I think, yeah, I understand in the minutes, the minutes were documented as, you know, writing it as merit-based, but really the motion that Ms. Van Hooser moved to approve, the 2016 to 2017 institutional compensation proposal presented and recommended by the Audit and Business Committee. And so that proposal that was presented, I think, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, did it not include all of the things that you just presented? So it wasn't just purely merit, it was, you know, the motion was this institutional compensation proposal.
And the proposal that we submitted to the board through the Audit and Business Committee included the 1% across the board, a 2% merit pool for the non-faculty, and the 2% to be applied to the faculty's compensation model, which included a merit component. And that is, that is exactly what she showed.
I think one thing, just to put, well, two things. One is, I believe that the comparisons are not just university, they are also kind of industry-based. So for example, it's taking into the account the fact that a college of business professor in accounting could make a lot more money as an accountant, or a nursing professor could make a lot more money working as a nurse than what they make here at Tennessee Tech or at a university setting. And so the other thing is that I do want the board to know that these salary increases, we have had salary increases, but if you compare them to inflation and Consumer Price Index, we're not making any ground. And so, yes, we got a raise, but it is not keeping up when you make those comparisons.
So we made this argument last time, and I pointed out then that if you continue to pay people for not accomplishing the strategic goals of the university, people who are just, and I'm not saying there's many of them, I'm just saying whoever they are, and you're paying them for not performing, then you're putting an anchor on this university. And we just talked about how we need to be nimble, we need to be able to turn on a dime, we need to be moving forward the strategic plan, and we can't afford to have anybody, staff, administration, or anywhere else that is not pulling their weight. And the only way, I think, you're gonna get that done is by having skin in the game. Every person, staff, faculty, administration, whoever you are, your pay for performance is gonna determine how much you get going forward. Now, it is true that they do hire and pay more for people when they get them from industry. You've got to pay them or they're not gonna come. But that's when they get hired, and we're talking about performance. That's what we're talking about, performance within this job, and that's all I'm saying. And okay, the motion that was made was changed in the process that was done, and so I can't do anything about that. But I think it's important that the will of this board be honored. And I voted against the motion, but I think the will of the board should be honored. And the will was clearly stated, the minutes, that 2% would be for merit pay.
I think the will of the board was honored. I'm sorry, but if you didn't understand the proposal as it was presented, I don't think that's the fault of the board.
I agree with you, and I'll be more cautious.
And the other, I guess the other point is, for me personally, I'm very pleased that we didn't just do a blank at 3% and that we did try to invoke some merit into it, but not only the merit aspect of it, but, you know, trying to bring everyone up to at least this COOPA standard. I think, I have no problem with that. You know, my goal is to have much better-paid employees across the board. But I do want there to be a merit aspect to it, and I think we covered that, and I think we honored that. And I don't, and if you look, too, at the results that they showed among the faculty, there was not anybody out of all the numbers that actually got an unacceptable. I think if they'd gotten an unacceptable, then they would've gotten zero, because if you remember, the requirement was, you have to meet, I guess, a minimum standard to get the 1%. So everybody got the 1%.
Tom, I think...
The other benefit, too, is that there were also promotions involved. So the overall average among the faculty was a 3.2%. It was higher than the 3% because of the promotions.
Thank you for taking the time to explain it to me.
And I'm just gonna say the same thing. We had, we had for the last meeting 250 pages of things to review, and as K. No, K. Noz, I reviewed them extremely carefully. I didn't review everything that your committee had, so what I would hope that it could...
But if it's something that important that you wanna make that point about, I don't understand it.
I have a request. When it's clear that, or at least, if I had known that formula, I would say, I'm not sure that what the board is, at least some of us on the board were asking, is consistent with what's gonna happen. And my suggestion would be, when it's clear we don't know what, you know, what the outcome is gonna be, and that maybe the outcome's not consistent with what we think, I'm just asking that somebody said, now you under, well, would say, now you understand that this is blah, 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 just to help us. There's, I don't think there's any way that, you probably didn't review my 250 pages, I bet you didn't. And so it's not possible or reasonable to expect that we're gonna know the inner workings of this university, and when what we're suggesting is not gonna happen, we're not gonna know that. So I just feel a little bit also, I would've liked to have had someone point that out. So if we could ask folks to please do that.
The next time that I think you don't understand, I'm...
Tell me.
I need to explain it.
Well, tell me. If you had, if you reviewed all that new, I didn't, so...
I would say it this way, if you're gonna do something that's contrary to what the board's motion was, just make us aware of it, that's all. If it's not gonna be consistent with what the board agreed to.
And I don't, I don't think we did.
Well, it's just a difference in opinion, I'm just saying, out of consideration.
Miller?
I appreciate you reading those 200 pages, and that's really commendable. I must confess, I didn't read a one of them, you know? And I don't intend to. I think we've gotta leave that up, if he's right, assuming that everything he says is right, and I think it maybe is right about the motion. But that's gotta be done by the university. We can't sit here and make a judgment on who gets what. I mean, we can't, we can't, last time this was so, last serious divorce case, I tried a lot of stuff, and the judge, who was sent in special because one was a lawyer, he said, "Gosh, I can walk on water, but I can't divide the fishes and the loaves." And I don't think we can sit here and make a judgment whether Kyrie gets a raise or doesn't.
I don't, I hope, and I don't think, that that's what we're saying. I think we were saying, and I don't know if this is even in the purview of the board, that we would like to see that 3% be merit increases. I don't know if the board can say that or not. Maybe the board can't even say that. Maybe the Board can't even say that.
Wow.
Yeah, wow. Well, first of all, when we, when we get that information, and we come and sit at this table, and we are making, we are voting on actions that are going to affect this university in major ways, and so, if you don't know that, and what those consequences might be, that's, I kind of-
We cannot know it. I mean, we can't know all of this. It's not humanly possible in the, in the time that we have, and the fact that we actually have lives and have businesses to do that. So I think we need to just figure out what the middle ground is, how we understand when something that we thought we were saying isn't done, why that was the case, or maybe the other way to say is this-
I'm sorry, we had a motion, and we discussed it completely at the last meeting. We passed that motion.
Well, I know that, I guess my only request is, if it's clear to anyone that what we voted that we wanted is not going to happen, just because of a policy that we don't know, if someone could just say, now, you understand that under the current policy what's going to happen, it's just that simple.
I'm going to move on. Is there anything else from your report?
I'll leave it there.
Thank you. Okay. This is actually perfect timing. The next item on the agenda is revision of Bylaw 1.5. At our last Executive Committee meeting, there was some, I guess, concern of the Chair going rogue, so I did a little research on the bylaws and the, and there's really, just to make it clear, you know, that if the Board is not happy at any time with the Chair and how I run the meeting or whatever, that there's a, there's a policy here to address that. So I had this added to the agenda, and we are revising, help me out. Section 1.5, we're adding a section E, and it says, "In cases where a Board member makes a motion to remove the Chair, and the motion is seconded, the Chair will immediately hand over control of the meeting to the Vice Chair. In the absence of the Vice Chair, the Board may temporarily appoint a member to preside over the discussion and vote on the motion. If the motion is not successful, the Chair will resume control of the meeting." And the main point was, if you're not happy at any time with the Chair and the way the Chair does the job, you know, I'm going to make sure there's a mechanism for you to remedy that situation. So, but that's the point, because the Chair does have specific powers and authority, and I never want to be in a position that you can't make a change. So there it is. And I would entertain a motion that you accept this change to Bylaw 1.5.
Our motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it. I've never read it, but I'll second it.
I just read it to you. Is there any other comments or discussion?
I want to fully state that I support the Chair. I have no problem with the Chair, I'm not mad at the Chair.
Love the Chair.
I'm happy for you to continue to service the Chair. I have no plans for you other than to continue to lead us. I simply had a question about-
I didn't, I didn't come up with this in the last twenty minutes.
It was just fortuitous that it came up next to us.
Should we, should we do a vote of confidence in the Chair?
No, no, I mean, this, this, this is, I know this seems like a little bit of a joking matter at this time, but, but it's really not. I mean, it is a serious thing. There needs to be a mechanism to remove the Chair. And I thought it was clear at the last Executive Committee meeting, and after reviewing it from our discussions, it, I didn't think it was adequate. And so I'm making it clear. And-
Well, you have a motion on the floor.
I have a motion, I have a second. Is there any other comment or discussion?
I don't like it, and I don't like it because two-
You can vote no's.
Okay, but let me tell you why.
But you were the one at the Executive Committee that said-
Let's vote on the mo, I called for the motion.
All right, we have a call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye. I'm sorry, got to have a roll call vote. Go ahead.
Fleming? Geist?
Aye.
Oakley?
Aye.
Segurty?
What are you voting on again?
Provision to Bylaw 1.5.
I thought I agree, I thought we were moving Tom.
Is that an a regardless?
Before, on the Bylaw, I don't know, Tom, that we should just say, one, one proposal and one second. That shouldn't trigger it, that could, that could, that's the minority of the Board.
No, no, it doesn't. All it does is that if the motion is made, and it could be made any time, is that I have to relinquish the Chair and let the Vice Chair preside over that motion. That's all it is. Because the Chair, if you really look at the rules, the Chair has the authority to not bring it, to not entertain the motion. I don't have to accept it. So this basically takes the-
Yeah, and I, I'm okay with that, where if there is a motion second, then there should be a vote of the full Board.
Yeah, yeah, it's still requ, if you want to remove the Chair, it still requires two-thirds. But right now, the Chair can obstruct it and never have it brought up. So I'm giving you the mechanism to take me out, and if you want to, by all means.
To a good restaurant, take him out to a good restaurant.
All right, so the motion's been made and seconded, you're doing a roll call vote.
With the clarification, I'm going to start from the top. Fleming?
And now that I understand it, I change it, I agree with that.
Geist?
Aye.
Oakley? Segurty?
Aye.
Stites? Van Hooser?
Aye.
Willmore?
Aye.
You have a, eight ayes in favor?
You can let me vote?
Jones?
Aye.
Nine.
All right, moving on along. We're ready for the Executive Committee report recommendations, and the first item on the agenda is revision of Policy 002. This is selection evaluation and retention of the President. And basically, I'll just read it straight out of here. Policy 002 currently states that the Board will evaluate the President on a form developed by the Office for Human Resources. And Policy 002 needs to be revised to reflect the evaluation will be conducted following the procedures approved by the Board. Later on in the meeting, we're going to approve those procedures, and you can see those procedures, but the idea is that the Executive Committee will basically be doing that evaluation instead of some form developed by the HR. Okay? So, I'd like to entertain a motion, the further documentation for this should be in your, in your packet. If anybody needs to take a look at it, that's, that's fine. But I would entertain a motion that the Board approved the revision of Policy 002.
Second.
Okay.
Second.
It's been, motion's been made, been seconded. Any other comments need to be made? So, okay, roll call vote.
Fleming? Geist?
Aye.
Oakley? Segurty?
Aye.
Stites?
Aye.
Van Hooser?
Aye.
Willmore?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Motion carries. Okay. Secondly, there were some revisions needed to Policy 005, and those are related to the Audit Committee matters, evaluation of the President, and matters that come before the Executive Committee and its reporting requirement. There were literally five different changes. One of those changes resulted in quite a bit of discussion, and so, for the sake of the full Board, I pulled out one item, that's Section 005, Section VC, and we'll take that independently. So, but taken together in 005, there are four things, four parts to this, and I'll go over them very briefly. First of all, the State Audit Guidelines require the Board to nominate members of the Audit Committee and Chair. I think this was a housekeeping matter when we first appointed the Audit Committee, we appointed it from the Chair, but State Guidelines say that the Board has to, I guess, appoint the Audit Committee. So that's one of the changes. Secondly, Section VC number two, the Executive Committee is revised to allow delegation of authority to the Executive, or, I'm sorry, but this policy is revised to allow delegation of authority to the Executive Committee to perform the President's evaluation. And that's the same point we were making earlier. And number three, a provision is added to delegate authority to the Executive Committee to approve matters brought to it by the President, provided those matters are not reserved to the full Board. This provision is simply a catch-all for anything that the President may come up with that we haven't thought of. It's not, I mean, there's nothing specific here. It's simply a catch-all that says, if the President, if the President says, "I think I need the Executive Committee's backing on this," we're authorized to do that. That's all it is. The last one, number four, it says a provision is added to require the Executive Committee to report its actions to the Board at the next regular meeting. At the last Executive Committee meeting, I thought it was assumed that that was always the policy, it should be the policy, but any time the Executive Committee acts, an authority of the Board, not at a full Board meeting, the Executive Committee is required to bring that back to the full Board when we meet. And that's simply a cleanup, that should have been in there all along. So, we have a motion to accept all these- Mr. Oakley's made the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Melissa, you want to say something?
Yes, I have a, just a quick question. So, if, so, the Executive Committee, if they make an action, would it, would it not be easy to inform the full Board at that time, that it was made somehow?
I think, I think two weeks ago, we had three Board members all out of the country. So-
Yeah, but we're just saying, we're just going to inform them. So this is just, instead of waiting for the full Board-
Well, there are limits to the Executive Committee's power, those are listed elsewhere. So-
Okay. I just want to, just trying to figure, tell me again exactly what's in this motion? Because there's a, there's a, there's a little bit of a contraindicate or contradiction in the Executive Committee. If you look at C, Executive Committee, and then point two, and then there's another revision for number three, but that might be something different that, okay. Okay, saying it's the next agenda item, so we're good.
Yes. Yeah, the approval of appointments, that's what I was saying, I pulled that out to take it up separately.
So, the Executive Committee can act on, and I'm assuming that these would be, I'm just trying to wrap my mind around, what, what types of things are we, are we talking about? That the Executive Committee might act without the full Board, and when would that be necessary?
I don't know, but to me, the bottom line is, you have to trust the Executive Committee to say, you know, if this is too important, we're not going to do it, we'll take it to the full Board.
Okay.
You know, and that's, that's part of the reason why, you know, if you think that the Chair and the Executive Committee has too much power, you can go nuclear. You know, but, but the point is, I think you have to have a mechanism for the Executive Committee to support the President between Board meetings and make it happen. And then, of course, we have to come back to the full Board and report, and if there are problems or issues with those decisions, the full Board can certainly bring it back up.
Okay. But there couldn't be a provision of some type of, of knowledge shared that that action was taken before the full Board? Communication via email, something that says, "The Executive Committee met, these things were decided, this will show up at the next Board meeting."
I think that's, that's certainly reasonable. I mean, when an Executive Committee has a meeting, and as soon as those minutes are published and they go to the Board, it's public for all the Board members to read.
Okay.
So, you should know ahead of time, before the Board member, what action, before the meeting, what actions were taken.
Okay. Yeah, that's correct. So if the Executive Committee officially met, that would show up as a-
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Provided you read the two hundred and fifty pages.
And I do.
So, all right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further comments? Roll call vote, please.
Fleming? Geist?
Aye.
Oakley? Segurty?
Aye.
Stites?
Aye.
Van Hooser?
Aye.
Willmore?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Okay, the next one, this was one that was discussed quite a bit at the Executive Committee, it says, "It's a change to 005 relating to the approval of positions and appointments reporting directly to the President." And it says, well, the summary is that we want to revise Policy 005, Section VC, to include a provision to delegate authority to the Executive Committee to approve the creation and removal of executive positions that report to the President and appoint, and appointments to all positions reporting directly to the President. So, I guess the idea is that any time the President wants to make a hire or an appointment, depending on the position, normally there would be a selection process, but it is possible for some positions that the President could do a direct appointment. And this provides an Executive Committee oversight that says yes or no, or the Executive Committee could even say, "No, you can't do that appointment, we want to see a full selection process." But part of the reason for limiting it to the Executive Committee is just the expedience and timeliness and efficiency of trying to make, fill those positions when it's needed. And, I mean, Dr. Oldham, if you want to speak to this, I think in the past, before, the President only sought approval from the Chancellor, is that correct?
That's correct. In, under the TBR system, the Chancellor had that delegated authority from the TBR Board to make those interim decisions. And so, if there was a, if there was an appointment that needed to be made, that was a direct hire, or a direct report to the Presidents, the Presidents would seek approval from the Chancellor to do that. And so you could, you could move in a fairly expedited fashion.
And why, why sometimes do you need to move in an expedited fashion?
Well, obviously, Board meetings happen roughly quarterly, so depending on the particular position that you're trying to fill, when you're trying to recruit and negotiate with somebody to fill a position, it's very difficult to ask them to wait around a month or two until the next Board meeting. And, and the other thing is, obviously, for high-level positions in particular, well, in fact, we don't even do this for lower-level positions, but to, to put some of these people, expose them publicly in a Board meeting for approval would, would discourage a lot of, would-be applicants for the position.
Mr. Chairman, I accept, I move that we accept the Executive Committee report and recommendations in reference to 5.3 revisions.
Motion's been made, do we have a second? Mr. Oakley, second it. Any other comments?
Can I make, I would like to make a quick comment. So, and I don't know if there's going to be additional discussion, but another option could potentially be that any, so what I was thinking about is from a budget perspective, that the creation of new positions or different positions is a broader concern than just filling, right? So creating a new position, I think, is, is something that, that's, you know, that the Finance Committee may have to worry about, that, you know, there may be others that are, that are concerned about creating new positions. I totally get the feeling, I don't, I don't think the whole Board needs to be involved in filling a position and existing positions, and I totally get that, but as far as creating new positions, like for instance, what we just dealt with on the reorganization and, and those kinds of things, that those things aren't done overnight anyway, and create, and are lots of thought process put in them, that that might be a potential discussion.
Would you recommend amending that motion, that the creation of new positions or reorganization be pulled up to the full Board, but yet the Executive Committee pretends, has to approve appointments and hires?
I think that's a great, that's a great point and a great change, because I do think that that is what makes, what makes me uncomfortable, is the creation, and the, like you were saying, the further implications for that. And again, we're talking about, I can't imagine this happening often, we're talking about a very small group of direct reports to the President, who are the most powerful people on this campus, and so, to get a- And so, to get a, to get the full board approval for that type of position, to me, sounds like a, a better way to go.
And just to clarify, though, what you're saying, though, is it's the formation and creation of that position, not necessarily the approval of that individual. So, if the organizational change is made, that requires a full board. But once the person is chosen for that position, then the executive committee is the only one that has to approve that.
Yep. In, in the real world, though, when, when we try and think through it, if there is an open position, it's advertised, or there is a board discussion about it, I think what we're doing is giving Tom the ability to, and the executive committee the ability to say, okay, we've gone through the interview process, we need to make a decision, and we can't wait for the next scheduled, regularly scheduled board session to, to sign up on this. We've got to move fast, and because we made our decision on the right candidate. And otherwise, we may, we may lose opportunity. Because in the real world, that's what happens, right? So, 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 all we're doing is giving Dexco and, and Tom the ability to, to support the ultimate decision on the candidate. We're not saying we're giving them the ability to create a new candidate on their, a new position on their own or, or, or to, or to do something dramatically different than, than the organization supports today.
But that is what it says now.
I'm sorry, I missed the last point. Say it again.
It would require modification to this.
Yeah, we would have to amend it. So, we're, we're talking about amending it. Sorry.
Just listen a minute. I am vehemently opposed to this board choosing the faculty. We cannot get in a position of hiring and firing the people who work here. You can't expect, I wouldn't think about a pun.
We're not saying that.
Let me finish now.
Okay, but we're not saying that.
Am I permitted to finish?
I'm sorry.
We're getting in a position of trying to macro, to, to have authority we, we don't want. Management, in any business, management's got to run the store. The board of directors doesn't. We're both the board directors, Teresa. And creating a position, are we the one, are we the ones to determine whether or not the university needs that position? I don't think so.
I don't want to be in a position to be responsible for those hires, but I do think it's prudent that when the president wants to make those hires, that there is a, you know, executive committee or the chair, just as a second check to say, yeah, okay. But I'm not going to recommend somebody else.
May I finish?
Yep.
Okay. Frankly, if I'm wrong about this, I, I, I would certainly, my memory's not too retentive anyway. But if I want a job at this school, university, if the, the committee selects me, the, the president has, in effect, the veto power. Is that a correct statement? So, it's a system that checks and balances on that. And do we want the authority to upset that? I don't think so.
My, my concern is maybe losing some of the checks and balances. And so, just to be clear, we're not talking about, you know, the 300-plus faculty positions. We're talking about eight executive board positions. So, let's just separate those two. So, we're talking about eight positions, something that should happen very, very rarely, that the president has to suddenly appoint one of these eight positions. I, I can't imagine that happening often. So, what, what I'm hearing maybe is that even in this day and age of technology and Zoom, and that we can't somehow get the full board together on such an important decision.
Because, I mean, even the last search committee.
May I respond?
Yep.
What eight positions are there that this board needs to approve? Just name one, I don't know of one.
The provost.
Do we, do we hire the provost?
But, let's just back up a little bit. Do you want to make any comments on what positions would actually go through a selection process versus an appointment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I think that's the crux of the matter.
Yeah, the, the typical route is to do a, do a search and a, and a selection process that's, that's pretty open. Very rarely, but occasionally, there are, there are reasons to do an expedited hire, okay? And, like I said, that happens very, very rarely, but you, I think you do need a mechanism to be able to do that in those rare circumstances. And so, you know, having, I, I, I absolutely agree that, you know, if you're talking about a, any kind of significant reorganization to, to the structure, administrative structure, I think the board would want to know what's going on and, and be able to probe deeply into that, and that's perfectly fine. I don't have any problem with that. I just, I think we need the kind of flexibility to be able to operate, however, and not wait for a board meeting. And, and I realize it, it may seem trivial, but it is, it actually is very difficult to get the board together, even electronically, for events in between, because we have a very active board.
Before we move on to the executive committee meeting, when this topic came up, I had asked Shandy from the Huron Group to make some comments on it. And just what standard practice, what other universities do. Could you come tell us what you think?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. A couple of observations. It is relatively common for boards that require, for boards that require president or board approval of presidential hires, that that authority is delegated to the executive committee. Not in every case, but I'd say in the majority of cases, that's delegated to the executive committee. A second distinction that's often made, and I think gets to Melissa's point, is that, is that the clarification is between executive positions versus staff positions. So, provost, vice president for finance, and other executive-level positions would go through the executive committee. But the president still has authority for staff positions in the office, the assistant, you know, and other staff-level positions. I think, you know, why, why do a lot of executive, why do a lot of boards delegate that authority to the executive committee? It, it is expediency. It is, it is some privacy of the process. A lot of times, candidates don't want to go in front of a full board process for, for vetting and, you know, a vote. It will discourage certain candidates from, from going through a process. So, I think it's expediency and, and making sure that the applicant pool is, is important there.
So, we've had, this did pass through the executive committee. We have a motion, but we have a recommendation for an amendment. So, I think, Kay, you've tried to draft this appropriately. So, what I'm going to suggest is that I'm going to read a proposed amendment to your motion, and if you accept it, then we'll move on. But do you have any, you wanting to say one last thing?
Well, yes, I want to point out to Melissa and everybody here, actually, we have the ultimate authority. We have all the authority. We can remove the president, you know? We can meet, we can get together and fire him. If he gets doing all these bad things, you know? I mean, it's, the ultimate authority is here. But we don't want to get into the logistics of, can you imagine applying for a position? Attacking, having to come below this board and get chewed on and ask them about what they think about everything? Why, you wouldn't, no absolute would want to go through that, I don't think. I certainly wouldn't want to be asked about personal issues. And then you've exposed, you're at University A, and you want to come here. So, you come over here and get exposed. They know you're trying to leave. How does that make them, they just won't do that. You won't leave one job and tell them you're leaving.
The exposure will happen anyway, because if the executive committee meets, it's public. The exposure's going to happen, but I'm, I'm good.
Can I add a quick question? Mary?
As it currently stands, within our regulations, in these eight positions, for, to hire them, you need board approval. Is that right? As it currently stands? And you're saying, instead of having the board come together, let the exec, the executive committee do it. Is that right? Am I understanding it right?
That's correct. And before, well, before we had a board, he only had to get permission from one person, the chancellor.
Right, I understand. But as it, now that we have a board, that's the way it is. That's, that's, we're just trying to streamline it based on how we have to do it now because of the new structure. Okay, thanks.
So, anyway, what, I haven't even read this, but if I can read Kay's handwriting, the, I'm going to let you read it.
The motion, as I understand it, would be to amend policies to require board approval of the creation and removal of executive positions reporting directly to the president, and to require executive committee to approve cabinet-level appointments to positions reporting directly to the president.
Leave creation in?
So, it says, it says for the full board to, for the creation and removal of executive positions reporting directly to the president, and the executive committee to approve cabinet-level appointments to positions reporting to the president, directly to the president.
Kay, excuse me, Ms. Carver, you explain that. I don't, I'm getting more, I'm getting more confused.
Basically, if, as I understand it, if we're reorganizing, as we are doing, you know, if you're reorganizing, creating new positions, that, that call, that's, that requires full board approval for that reorganization. But it's not necessarily the individuals that are hired. But then, when a hiring decision is made, then only the executive committee says, yeah, that's okay. Please. Johnny, do you accept that amendment or, or to your motion? Do you understand?
I wasn't.
I, I do understand, thank you. I'm, I'm just wondering if in your experience, did you ever have to hire anybody that didn't want anyone else where they exist, where they currently worked, to know that they were talking to you? And would that have jeopardized your opportunity to get that top person if they knew that you were going to make it public so that their current employer would know? I mean, I think that's where this process comes into play the best.
Well.
I, I'm just asking the question.
Okay, so I'm confused.
So, I'm saying, if somebody comes to talk to you about a position, and they say, I'm willing to consider it, but I don't want my current employer to know that I'm talking to you, because if I do, I may not make it with you, and he may fire me for looking somewhere else. That's similar to what these high-powered people that he might be talking to in these executive positions may be facing.
Yeah, but we're just asking that it be, and I thought that was already the motion on the table, was that it would be the three of, the three of you all who did that, and that's not changed. The only thing that changed that I, and maybe I confused things, and I should have just kept my mouth shut, was that any reorganization or addition of executive positions, not the people in them, but creation of new positions or major reorganization would require board approval, but that the executive committee has the authority to approve appointments that the president makes.
And your, your understanding of how that would work would be that it, there would never be a case where the president might want to fill a position that, that currently doesn't exist, and that he should wait to the next board meeting to give consideration to that? That's why you're making that, that change in the motion?
That is, that is.
I didn't even think about that, truthfully.
Yeah, that, guys, I, I'm actually quite supportive of the language, of the language, because what this does is, is it gives us the ability to be flexible. It gives us the ability to move quickly when we need to. But we've got three members of our board on the executive committee. If you can't trust three members of our board, we shouldn't be here as a board.
I concur.
It's not, it's not saying that the chair, the executive committee, the three members.
I withdraw my modification. We'll just make the, let the executive committee can, because, I mean, I get that there, there may be positions that he wants to create just so that he can bring a, a high-ranking candidate in and then, and not have to do with the board. So, it gives him the flexibility. But also anticipate that if it is something that's a major thing, that you're going to bring it to the board anyway, and that you're not going to have many of those other situations.
You know, you know, part of it is, I, honestly, at this point, I could argue either way on whether it's, on the formation and creation, whether it's a full board or the executive committee. Personally, I would leave it just the executive committee, because I do think you've got to trust the executive committee. And if the executive committee says, no, this is an important enough change, we're not going to stand for it just us, we want the full board, they can do that.
They can do that, I agree.
They can do that. It's not, you know, you, now, kind of the discussion we had, that, you know, if you're concerned about a rogue executive committee, then you, you know, you need to get better board members or trust your board members.
I, I fully agree. Tom, I fully agree with that. I think we, we have to make sure that each one of us is, is, it's not a one-man show, right? You've got three members of, of the board that are on the executive committee. But I think we should stop, we should stop overly analyzing this, because it always goes around the corner otherwise.
So, let's just call for a vote on the original motion.
All right, so.
That's right, we can change the executive committee if we want to.
And, and one other comment, too, is that, you know, a year from now, or whenever, you know, if you get a board chair and executive committee you don't trust, change the rule, make it a full board.
One more thing, Perna, when you, Perna, when you were saying a rogue executive committee, I mean, I think we also have to think about, and again, we're talking, we're talking about not this group sitting around this table, right? We're talking about policies for the future.
Everybody says that, but we're talking about it a lot.
What if you had, what if you had a rogue president who was bringing in all of his own people and appointments from?
But that's, that's fine. If, if three members of our, of our very small board don't see through that, then you've got a real problem, much more than the rogue president. And then, as, as Millet says, we have the ability to remove the rogue president.
We're about to talk this deal to death. We're talking it to death.
I'm going to call the question. Johnny, I'm going to go back to your original motion, which basically was, I'm going to read it as we understood it. It's revised to include a provision to delegate authority to the executive committee to approve the creation and removal of executive. Do we want to add the word and cabinet, or is that included?
I would recommend adding cabinet level.
Say, executive and cabinet-level positions that report to the president and appointments to all positions reporting directly to the president. Johnny, is that acceptable for your motion?
That's the way I would have said it.
Perfect. And Mr. Oakley seconded. We'll have a roll call vote.
Fleming? Geist?
No.
Oakley?
Aye.
Segurty?
Aye.
Steitz?
Aye.
Ben Hoosier?
Aye.
Willmore?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay.
All right, motion carries.
If I could take a moment to clarify the record, I have been announcing a nine ayes. It has been gently pointed out to me, there are only eight voting members here, so the minutes will reflect, any place that I said nine will reflect eight in the minutes.
But in this motion, it was seven ayes, one nay.
That is correct.
Correct. Okay, next item on the agenda. Board procedures for president's performance reviews and comprehensive reviews.
Can I, I don't know the correct place for this, but in that same, the executive committee, the one, two, and three, can, can we just look at, on executive committee, point two, it says, "The executive committee may act for the board between regular meetings on urgent matters except the following, which shall serve, reserve to the board." And it's, the first one is presidential selection and termination. And then, so, I, to me, those are things that need full board, correct? But then, when we go down to three, I guess now it's D, it says, "The executive committee shall ensure the integrity of the board and are responsible for making recommendations or taking action as allowed relating to the selection, retention, evaluation, termination, compensation of the Tennessee Tech's president." So, I think our, I think maybe we have a contradictory statement in one, or, excuse me, two A, and then three, I guess what is now D.
So, the executive committee can make recommendations? Well, it does say we're taking actions.
We are on.
It's policy 005, page six.
So I guess my.
You know, I guess the way I read it is making recommendations, so the executive committee can certainly make recommendations to the full board relating to the selection, retention, evaluation, termination, compensation, benefits, and performance of the president. It says, or taking action as allowed. So I don't think, can you correct me? That the executive committee, it says, up on number two, says, the executive committee may act for the board between regular board meetings on urgent matters except the following, which shall be, shall be reserved to the board, presidential selection and termination. So I, I don't see a contradiction.
So, and with that, 'cause the, the change that came out of executive committee is, doesn't at some point the full board evaluate the president?
It's coming up on this next agenda.
Oh, sorry.
Never mind.
Okay, all right, so.
One final clarification. Melissa, you're nice to bring these things up, because, because it makes us think and I respect you for it, I really do, but let the lawyer explain the difference between may and shall. One is directory and one is mandatory. It's a pretty significant word. Would I be correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, so moving, moving ahead to agenda item, I don't even know what number it is, five? Five, um, yeah, five D. Basically, it is tab 5.4 in your book, says, board procedures for president's performance reviews and comprehensive reviews. Now, just to give you a little background on this, after the last board meeting, I did speak with AGB, and it is, yeah, AGB, and simply to the sake of time, I asked Trudy to talk with them and work with AGB in coming up with a presidential evaluation process. AGB, it's Association of Governing Boards, I couldn't remember it, thank you. But anyway, we, I, I think she did a great job, and this is a pretty comprehensive evaluation process. To be honest with you, it scares me a little bit, because there's a lot of back and forth and a lot of moving parts, but I do think that it's comprehensive in that it does a couple of things. For one, is that it does provide for confidentiality for the president and his review, but at the same time, it provides for input and evaluation from the full board and from the faculty. So I'm gonna step through this process as it's in the proposed order of business, but this is not the complete process, okay? This is just the reader's digest version. You should have a, in your book, and I think I've shuffled my papers to the point where I don't. You got it? Okay. So it is actually a two-page document that describes the process, so I'm just gonna summarize it and hopefully we can move on. But basically, number one is that the board and the president agree on goals. Now, this first year, we don't have his goals, because we're new and he did that a year ago, so this first step doesn't apply this year, but the goals that we set now will be part of the evaluation process a year from now. So number two, the president submits a self-assessment to the executive committee. Number three, the executive committee sends the assessment to the board members and solicits comments from the board. So the first step is, it goes to the executive committee, then the executive committee sends it to the full board, and the full board may comment and respond. Number four, the executive committee also will review confidential faculty evaluations from, of the president. So the faculty has the opportunity to provide confidential evaluations, and that goes to the executive committee. Number five, an executive committee representative summarizes the comments and shares with the executive committee. So it's the executive committee representative, which is most likely the chair, could be anybody, I'm hoping it's gonna be Trudy, but, anyway, so we will receive and summarize those comments from the faculty and provide that to the executive committee. Then the executive committee representative will meet with the president to review all the material. So basically, the faculty has input, the board has input, and then representative sits down with the president and has that meeting. Now, I'll tell you right now, if I'm the representative, I'm not doing it alone. I'll take Trudy with me, just to have at least two people, okay? Number seven, the executive committee representative provides a written summary of the meeting with the president to the full board. So after we meet with him, we have to give a report back to the full board, and the board can, again, take another bite at the apple and you can append the comments to the written summary, and then the final copy of the assessment with comments will be provided to the president and to the board, and that's the end of the evaluation. But the point of it is that there is confidentially involved, confidentiality involved in the personal review. There is, but there's also flexibility and input from the faculty, from the board. As I said, it's a lot of back and forth and a lot of moving parts. It scares me a little bit, but I, I think we need to go through it this year. Next year, if we decide it's too cumbersome and we need to streamline it a little bit, we can change it next year, but this is the starting point.
Question. A faculty member wants to complain about the president, can they do it anonymously or do they have to sign their name?
Well, it's a confidential faculty evaluation, so there is an anonymous option.
So he would not get the opportunity to meet his accuser? You, does anybody on the faculty can write whatever they want to about him?
I think that's a burden of leadership.
He may not get a chance to talk to the accuser, but he could certainly address the, whatever the charge is, right? Or the, so, yeah.
You know, the challenge is, I don't know how many faculty evaluations you're gonna give. If you get 300 and I'm supposed to review and summarize them all, that's a bit of a challenge, so.
Melissa, I'm gonna vote no on this one.
I just have a quick, just question, or I just wanna throw this out there. The, and I understand balancing kind of the confidentiality piece, but I'm, I'm wondering if the presidential, that self-assessment, if there isn't a mechanism for that to be shared with, with the university commi, uh, community, because this is the president saying, this is how I think I've done, and, and so to, in a way, share that broadly and then let it go, and I, and I'm just throwing that out there. It's kind of.
I, I think we as a board are supposed to keep an eye on the key, key, key criteria. The, the president does a self-assessment, which is then evaluated, but there is a faculty representative also on the board, and there is feedback from the faculty. I think it'd be unfair for us to be publishing a president's self-assessment out there. There's no need to. This is supposed to be a confidential process. And if the faculty representative has a different point of view, then they'll speak up. The other, the other question I had was, was, Tom, when you, when you went and talked to the, to the AGB, did they say anything about, about inside board members and outside board members? Typically, in corporations, when there's, when there's inside board members on it, they're not part of the CEO review. Did they say anything about that?
Yeah, honestly, I didn't go that deep with them. Trudy may have, and she's not here, but I think that the attempt in addressing that is that the private meeting with the president is with a executive committee representative, and if that's me, as I said, I will take someone else from the executive committee with me. So, so that is a private meeting. But the full board would certainly see the president's self-assessment and a summary of all the faculty, I guess, evaluations as well, so. But I don't know if that helps. Yes?
This is too dangerous and too cumbersome. Just to turn this thing going back and forth, in my view, I move that we defer this to the next meeting, to give it a little further consideration. Without, without, I mean, if somebody objects to it, well, it's all right. I just think it's worth thinking about. To just turn people loose to writing what they want to about you, to sit down and write a 10-page ass, essay of what a schnook the president is or whatever, and, and to say that he can't have a right to know who wrote all that verbiage, whether it's true or not true, not to give him the right to know who's making all these complaints?
Two, two, two points, I guess. One is, I don't know exactly what the time requirement for the SAC COC is, but, but that was one of the reasons for pushing it to this meeting, is because they got an accreditation problem.
All right, I withdraw my motion.
Okay, and the second thing is that I'm just curious, Dr. Oldham, right now or under TBR, was there not also a faculty inputs as well?
Yeah, we, we do a, we do an administrative evaluation every year, just like faculty are evaluated by their students. So it's a, it is an anonymous process. Those, those results are, are tabulated and provided to the individual and their immediate supervisors, so, you know, those, those were available to the chancellor.
But in the past, even before our board, it was part of the system that any faculty member could do a presidential evaluation and submit it. Is that, is that correct? So that's not a new?
Anonymous part new?
I don't think so.
No, okay.
So. So Mr. Stites has moved for approval of this evaluation process. Barry Wilmore has made a second. I think at this point, I'm gonna call for the question. You want to roll call vote?
Fleming?
Aye.
Geist?
Aye.
Oakley?
No.
Segurty?
Aye.
Stites?
Aye.
Ben Hoosier?
Aye.
Willmore?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to one. Okay, next item on the agenda is item 5E, development of a contract for the president. And in discussing with AGB, Trudy and I independently both discussed with them, and the question is whether or not to pursue a contract with the president. I guess that's the, the magic question. After, and I'll say personally, I'm typically not a fan of employment contracts, but in the case of academia and a university president, I think it makes a lot more sense, to be quite honest with you. And it's not that we want a con, contract that is specific about, you know, the goals and objectives and strategic plan. It is a contract really about, probably the most important part is exit strategy. You know, we want to provide stability for the university in knowing that our president is not just gonna walk out of here on a whim, and he needs some stability, knowing that there is a process if we wanna terminate him, that, that we go through that process in a reasonable way. So what we are asking for here is not that the board would approve a contract, it is that the board direct the executive committee to try to develop one. And at a later meeting, we review that, and, you know, it flies or it doesn't. So, but the point is to at least allow the executive committee to go through the process and try to come up with a contract that we think is appropriate, and then present it to the board at a later date.
I so move, because we still have the ultimate authority, if he's doing something wrong, we just fire him, you know? So I think we oughta let him consider a contract. He's entitled to one.
Second.
We've got a motion made by Mr. Oakley, second by Barbara Fleming, and yes, Barry?
So based on this, I assume that there is not an existing contract now?
He does not have an existing contract, and from what, you know, my discussions with AGB, that about 85% of university presidents all have contracts.
So he could give us two weeks' notice?
Right now, tomorrow.
He wouldn't leave. He gives at least two weeks, surely.
So, I mean, like, like I said, I'm, I'm not, and I'm not, I just want some stability. I want him to have some security. I want us to have some security, too, and that's it.
I would've assumed there was a contract, but.
Do we get a second?
We had a motion, we have a second.
Question.
All, roll call, please.
Fleming?
Aye.
Geist?
Aye.
Oakley?
Aye.
Segurty?
Aye.
Stites?
Aye.
Ben Hoosier?
Aye.
Willmore?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Okay. Motion carries seven, eight?
Eight.
Eight oh. So, next item on the agenda is item number six. This is the president's goals and expectations. I wanna just make a brief introduction before you jump into this. In the executive committee meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, we did request that the president bring his goals and objectives for the coming year. We reviewed those. The execu, executive committee didn't actually take action on them, because in the discussions in the executive committee, we felt like there was significant editing and rearranging to be done, and Dr. Oldham has done that, and they're in our, our book. I have reviewed them and discussed them with the president, so I, I think it's a, a great start. You know, one comment, too, before we go into it, you can debate, you know, details of them all day long. You know, to me, the point is having a big picture of what are the main things that the university needs to be concentrating on, and, you know, what, setting some priorities. That's what I'm looking for here. So, and I do think that the, what are we calling it now? Strategic or tactical or whatever, this process that we're going through, really, going through that process should mold and shape these further, or maybe even replace them at some point. But the point is, it's kind of a moving target. This is what the president believes right now that we should be working on, and the executive committee has reviewed it quite a bit. We didn't act on it, because we weren't satisfied at that time, but now we're ready for his goals. So go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, you know, there, there are 10 that are indicated here, you know, and, and the first three are strategic in nature. One is to complete the new strategic plan to guide Tennessee Tech for the next five years, and we, we spent a lot of time earlier this afternoon talking about strategic or tactical planning. That has several parts to it, obviously, but I think most of those were, were highlighted in our previous discussion. So I'm, I'm asking the, the committee to put a significant emphasis on, on some of those things that were brought out earlier today as well, to, to really separate us as an institution strategically from the rest of higher ed. Enrollment management, obviously, is a, is a significant issue for not only Tennessee Tech, all universities today, but, but a significantly increased emphasis with a strategy behind it that emphasizes that value proposition for Tennessee Tech and, as well as a better, more diversification of our student enrollment. And then working closely with faculty leadership to prioritize and support those, those strategic faculty interests in alignment with those, those university strategies. Those are obviously very high-level goals, and that, really, all 10 of these goals are fairly ambitious, particularly on a, on a one annual cycle, but I think these are all very much high priority and absolutely necessary, and they're things we're doing anyway. You know, administrative goals, you know, there are four of those that sort of speak to the specific tactics and actions that kind of play into those strategic goals that are highlighted above. They're absolutely necessary actions that we need to move on, however, to, to see the success that we want to achieve. And then the last three really revolve around the university campus development as well as regional economic development. We've, we've played a much more significant role in recent years in, in not only developing the campus, but helping the campus play a more significant role regionally with improving the quality of life for those that we serve, and so that's included in, in those as well. Of course, the, the comprehensive campaign, fundraising campaign is part of that, is item number nine, and we're having, we're achieving a great deal of success with fundraising right now. We're, we're actually well above, ahead of schedule in terms of that $60 million goal that we announced publicly last spring, so, you know, I would submit these as an ambitious set of goals, but one I think is, you know, I'm fully committed to and anxious to see completion. But they are, as, as the chairman pointed out, as we move forward, just like with the strategic plan. we've got to be flexible. And so, not knowing what I don't know right now, there may be some things that pop up during the year that would cause some reason to take a fresh look at this. And at that point in time, I would certainly want to meet with the executive committee at least, to review and revise as necessary. We could bring that back before the board at that time. But I would submit this is my set of goals. Another, you know, I'll just add this in closing. Another advantage, I think, of formalizing a set of presidential goals like this, it should really help all the folks that report directly to me at the executive level. They will fully understand what my priorities are for the year, and so, it will aid them in being able to select the opportunities to achieve those high priority goals.
Okay?
I'd be glad to answer any questions specifically about any of them, if you have any.
My question would be, I've always heard that any goal that's not measurable is a wish, not a goal. Do you intend to have metrics that you can place with most, if not all of these?
Yeah, I'm actually, fundamentally for my own purposes, to just be able to track, you know, how much progress we're making. I'm beginning to work now on some specific actions and measurable outcomes attached to each one of these that could be tracked. Some of them, obviously, are a lot easier, more tangible in nature. Some are probably a little more subjective in terms of monitoring progress, but absolutely, I'll be working on those now.
It would be important, I think, to both of us and to you, that when we get to the end of the day and we're looking at it, that there's not left to a subjective weighting, it's objective. We've got at least some agreement on what the tangible goals are.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
For your benefit and our benefit.
My opinion was, I thought, this is a long list, almost too long. But I think when you go through this strategic process, hopefully, you'll be able to prioritize and focus in on what needs to be done first, and in an organized fashion, and that may change. But the expectation is, at the end of the year, next year, when we do his presidential evaluation, you know, we better see responses to all of these goals. So, he's already created, you know, his homework assignment for what he's got to report on next year. That's the way the process works.
That's kind of what I was maybe referring to, is if it's not the official self-assessment, that maybe at some point, you know, you would take each of these goals and maybe speak to the campus community about how those have been reached, not just for the board or the executive committee, but for the entire campus community. So, that's kind of what we're wanting, is to close that loop.
And, you know, part of it is that, as we said earlier, this needs to be a dynamic process. And so, you know, six months from now, if we have a change of heart in some of these things, you should come back to the board and say, you know, I need to reevaluate my priorities and goals, and this is what we think we need to do. So, this doesn't have to be set in stone. It's a starting point.
That's actually the way I look at it. It should be a guidepost.
Phil, as part of this, my guess is you'll also go get some statistics and some goals as part of the planning process you're going to go through. But for items like student enrollment, endowment, diversity on campus, those kind of things, they're really not one-year goals. But maybe you should think about, by 2020, here's what I aspire, here's what I'm gonna work towards. And so, as we as a team are looking at it with you, we're helping you achieve those goals. But all of us know what step change we are thinking about between now and 2020, say, some of those numbers. Because those are not stuff that you can change in a year. Also, two other items that I was thinking about, one is for the student body on campus. We need to be thinking about something there about the student body, whether it's the safety of the student body or, as Millet says, making them a happier student body, whatever it is. We just need to figure out another part of our goals for the student body. And then, if you're thinking about a new department, or a new specialization, or new something else, saying, I'm going to be working towards this also. So that becomes part of, not only your immediate task, but also the plan for the institution. They go hand in hand.
Yeah, I absolutely agree, Perna. I think those are great comments. And actually, it's part of my overall thinking. It actually started out with even a longer list than this, a number of goals, and it had a lot of those sort of specific items included that you brought up. The thinking was, in talking with the executive committee, the thinking was to narrow it down a little bit and provide a little bit better organization around those goals. There will be specific tactical action items related to strategy and innovation and differentiation that, you know, we'll certainly flesh out. And some of that will, I mean, I have some ideas in some cases. A lot of it, I think, will come out of the conversation with the strategic planning process and all the input we receive. And so, you know, that's why I've kind of left it open right now, but, and I hope the board is comfortable with that. But that's exactly what's on my agenda.
Yeah, and some of it, maybe we memorialize by saying that, as we get the planning process together, we're going to incorporate that, so we can't leave it totally blank. But one element that, ultimately, you're the CEO of this organization, and you have full responsibility. Given all that we're seeing happen on other campuses that are not very savory, we just need to make sure that somehow the student, community welfare, and making sure that we're creating the right kind of diversity atmosphere on campus, all that needs to be part of our charter. And we can't ignore that. And if something unfortunately does happen, we can't be reactive. We should be prepared for it.
Yeah, in fact, Perna, item goal number two, says, "Complete an Enrollment Management Plan for Fall 2018 and Beyond. It emphasizes TTU's value proposition and diversity." I mean, that was a main point that we wanted to make earlier.
Yeah, I think, to Perna's point, I could easily expand that one to include the student cultural environment of campus as well. I think it, I sort of include those intrinsically, but I could spell it out if that would be helpful.
Okay, we've brought up this agenda item. I don't think we've called for a motion yet. Do we have a motion to accept the President's Goals and Expectations?
Some motion.
Dr. Fleming actually made it.
Second.
Barry Wilmore made the second. Any other comments? So we have a roll call vote?
Can I make one comment? I think it would be helpful if you could take these goals and prioritize them, as the chairman said earlier. That would at least let us know where our emphasis is gonna be going forward.
You know, we talked about that before, and the thought was that the strategic process would help flesh that out.
Well, he would do it with them. He said he was gonna do that. So, that's why I don't think it matters right now. But as you're going forward with the strategic plan, I think it would be helpful.
It's a good point. Very good. Okay.
Fleming? Geist?
Aye.
Oakley? Segarty?
Aye.
Stites?
Aye.
Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Wilmore?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
No?
Six.
Six? Seven?
Seven.
Okay, okay, that's right, that's right. Sorry. Oakley's out. So, we're ready for item number seven on the agenda, Audit and Business Committee Report and Recommendations. I think the first point is that, and we had this before, is that the state audit has informed Tennessee Tech that it requires the board to nominate members of the audit committee and its chair. This action will bring the board into compliance with that requirement. And the point is, originally, the chair appointed those positions. The state says it should be approved by the full board. Teresa is, or has been, the audit committee chair, unless you want to make a change. I would suggest someone make a motion to approve her as the chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to make a motion that we nominate Melita Oakley, Puma Segarty, Teresa Van Hoosier, to serve on the Audit and Business Committee, with Ms. Van Hoosier serving as chair.
Can we have a motion? Do we have a second? Dr. Fleming made the second. We have a roll call vote?
Fleming? Geist?
Aye.
Oakley? Segarty?
Aye.
Stites?
Aye.
Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Wilmore?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, we're ready for tab number, or item number eight on the agenda. It's tab eight, Audit and Business Committee Report and Recommendations. And I think that there's a couple of non-action items, but Teresa, are you ready? Go ahead.
So first, just the list of the items that were reviewed as part of the committee. The committee reviewed the internal audit's annual report of activity for sixteen and seventeen, and no further board action is required. The committee also approved internal audits July twenty-seventeenth through December twenty-eighteenth, audit plan, and no further board action is required. And so, on the first non-action item is a notice of responsibilities. And bear with me as I read through this quickly, the board's responsibilities.
Just, is it necessary to read it all? We all have it in front of us. We should have reviewed it. Is that acceptable? Okay?
I'm gonna defer to Dana. What the Audit Committee Guidelines for Audit Committee Charter says is that the Audit Committee is responsible to regularly reiterate the responsibilities of the board, management, staff, students, and citizens, their responsibilities as they related to fraud, waste, and abuse. So, I don't know how to interpret that, other than I thought that's what it meant to read it, but...
But we could debate it or just read it. So why don't you read it, Teresa?
Okay.
If we've all read it, what difference does it make?
One of the duties of...
I agree.
Okay, I'm good with that. So, and maybe we can...
Is there any objection to moving ahead without reading it out loud? We all have it.
Just basically says that we're all responsible for reporting fraud, waste, and abuse.
Seeing no objections and recognizing the fact that every one of us is holding this paper in our hand and agrees to have read it, I'm gonna move on to the next agenda item.
Mr. Chairman, upon personal privilege, I want to apologize to you and the president for missing his remarks, but if you get over, go to the bathroom, creates more of a sense of urgency.
Tab number eight point three, Consent Agenda. So, upon the committee's recommendation, I move the board approve all items that were on the Audit and Business Committee Consent Agenda. These items are approval of revised Audit Committee Charter, the foundation agreement, the Planning and Finance Policy 521, Deposit and Investment of Funds. So, I move that we...
Yes, go ahead.
I think I'd...
Teresa's making that motion.
I make that motion, yes.
And Dr. Fleming had a second. Any other discussion on the consent agenda from the Audit Committee? Okay, roll call vote?
Fleming? Geist?
Aye.
Oakley? Segarty?
Aye.
Stites?
Aye.
Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Wilmore?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Okay, we're ready for eight D, the regular agenda from the Audit Committee. The first item is tab eight point four point one, Capital Outlay and Appropriations Requests Fiscal Year 2018 and 19. Teresa?
The committee reviewed and recommends approval of Tennessee Tech's 2018-19 capital outlay projects, capital maintenance requests, and disclosed projects. And I move that the board recommend capital outlay and appropriation requests as presented.
So we have a motion? Do we have a second? Okay. Stites had a second. Any other comment?
I just wanted to point out that, just to make sure that the campus community knows that the disclosed project, which is the International House, is not, just because it's approved does not mean that we are going forward with that. It was just, it's something for the future to consider. And I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, so that people didn't see that on the capital outlay in the information, and assume that we were gonna immediately start building that house.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other comments, a roll call vote, okay?
Fleming?
Aye.
Geist?
Aye.
Oakley? Segarty?
Aye.
Stites?
Aye.
Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Wilmore?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Motion carries? Okay, so we're ready for tab eight point four point two. This is Reorganization Recommendations. And Teresa?
The committee reviewed and recommends approval of the reorganization changes effective immediately, and I move that the board approve the reorganization changes as presented.
Okay, we have a motion made. Do we have a second? Barbara made the second. Any other comments on the reorganization?
Did we want to make the changes that Perna mentioned earlier to the enrollment management position? Huh? Yeah, the time.
Yeah, we will be making that change.
Okay, I didn't know if we would need to do it here or not.
I think, yeah, I don't think you need a motion to do it.
I understand that to be included in the recommendation from out of the committee.
Good, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion made and seconded? Okay?
Fleming? Geist?
No.
Oakley?
Aye.
Segarty?
Aye.
Stites?
Aye.
Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Wilmore?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one no.
So we're ready for agenda item number nine. This is Academic and Student Affairs Committee Report and Recommendations. First item is item A. This is just regular agenda items. I think the only one we have now is the Student Academic Misconduct, tab nine point one point one. Barbara?
Well, this is one that we've talked about at length, and it's the policy where if a student, if a charge is brought of academic misconduct, the initial policy was three days with no recourse if the student didn't get the email and respond. And so, Dr. Stevens worked with a group of faculty and a group of students who did a great job, we thought, of revising that policy to make it still maintaining academic integrity, but giving the student a little bit more time to respond and some recourse. There were some other very positive changes with that too, but our committee recommends that, recommends this for board approval. So, do we need a motion on that?
You're making it.
Well, I made the motion. Can we have a second on that?
Do we have a second? Okay, Geist, a second. So you have a motion made and seconded. Is there any other comment?
Yeah, I just had a concern that this wasn't a one-strike-you're-out kind of thing, where if someone is, even if they're guilty, that all circumstances are different. And my understanding is that that's not the case.
Well, Dr. Stevens, if you can clarify, I think you're correct, that it's sort of like what was the infraction?
Right. Because there's a lot of circumstances that go into any number of things. So, I would hate to have a one-strike-you're-out for someone that's here. I just want to make sure that wasn't the case.
It's definitely not that. And the, anything that is of that serious a nature that would go to the University Academic Misconduct Committee, they have options less than expulsion.
That was my understanding, though I haven't seen it written that way. So, thank you.
It's in the new policy.
The new one is more complete than you can imagine.
Okay, thanks.
Great work on that.
Just one, Nick, you were on that committee. You satisfied with that?
Yeah, I'm satisfied. There's a lot of discretion that the faculty have, and I think that they try to do a good job understanding the pressures on students. I think it's a good policy. Should move forward.
And we also have to thank Bobby and Michaela, because they also served on the work group. So we appreciate that.
Okay. Kay?
Fleming?
Aye.
Geist?
Aye.
Oakley? Segarty?
Aye.
Stites?
Aye.
Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Wilmore?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Okay, there is no other items, I think, coming up from the...
No, but I just want, if I could, two sentences about each one, just to share. A lot of deliberation went into this. We had an excellent presentation by Dr. Wilson on distance learning and online education. And that is part, not only of the President's goals, but will be part of the strategic plan. And so, the committee had strongly endorsed that, and I think it is really an overall priority of the board. And so I just wanted to say...
And so I just wanted to say that lots of deliberation went into that. And then the second thing was essentially that there's also some concern that we're providing appropriate incentives for faculty, because we are asking them to take major steps along with the university. And so President Oldham's been concerned about that as well. It's going to propose for us that he will review current awards, rewards, and recognition, and see if there's something that we're missing that maybe might be something that the faculty would be interested in. So I think that was another positive thing that came out of our committee, again, after a lot of discussion. That's it.
Okay, I think we are at the end of our meeting. There is a, we'll have the thirty-minute reception followed by the Saks COC onsite. I guess they're going to have a short presentation for the board members. So we'll all join back in here at four o'clock. With that, any other comments? Last minute? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.